Welcome to the school board, school counties, let me start all over, Sarasota County School Board Candidate Forum. And it's hosted by the Arts and Cultural Alliance of Sarasota County. And my name is Kelly Lavin, and I am the President of the Alliance's Board of Directors, and I'll be your moderator tonight. For those of you who are not familiar with the Alliance, the Alliance has been active for over 35 years in the community, particularly in supporting arts education, and generally arts in the community. To learn more, here's a brochure, please pick one up. We are a membership association, so we would love to have you as a member. And one of the wonderful benefits you get is an incredible newsletter that has everything that's going on in Sarasota County. So, we depend on membership to keep the Alliance going, so thank you. Clearly Sarasota is known for its arts, and it's well-known that when newcomers come here, and when they're asked why they decide to move here, they generally will say, "The beaches", and then they always say, "The arts", always. And what the new movers and residents soon learn to say is, "I'm proud to live in Sarasota, because the school board and the district are so supportive of the arts and experiential learning." And this year, for the first time, and this is in the 21-22 School Strategic Plan, this is the district's school strategic plan for the school board, it's the first time that arts and the importance of arts have been included in a strategic plan. So that is... And equally as important, and something that all of us should be proud of and talk a lot about, is that Sarasota has been recognized by groups such as the John F. Kennedy Center for Performing Arts and the National School Boards Association for its collaboration and productive relationships with the arts community, with foundations, donors in the school district. And what Ned, I'm sorry, Nate just spoke about is an incredible example, which we see over and over and over with all the arts groups and the school board and the schools who participate. The pride and appreciation and the support to keep Sarasota at the forefront of arts education is demonstrated by all of you that are here tonight. So, a little bit about this forum and its format. This is not a debate. Each candidate will be asked the same question, and will be given two minutes, no more than, maximum two minutes, to answer. There will be a 15-minute Q&amp;A at the end of the panel discussion, and all of the questions have been, already been submitted. Again, educational forum. We're all here to learn about each candidate's viewpoints and their qualifications, particularly as they relate to arts education in our schools. So, I want to also tell you, three Sarasota school board seats are up for election, with each having two candidates contending for the job. The Sarasota County School Board consists of five members elected to four-year terms. Board members must live in the district they are running to represent, but elections for all seats are county-wide. So, a little bit confusing, but you can vote, even if you're not in that district, and it's, they'll tell you when you get to the polls, but yes. District One Board Member Bridget Ziegler is being challenged by Danielle Singleton. District Four race Laura Kernov and Robin Marinelli are vying for the seat. And representing District Five, Nora Seetek and Timothy Enos are in the race for that open seat. So, Bridget, we're going to start with you, we're going to come down this way. Tell us a bit about yourself, your background, your experience, and your connection or interests in the Sarasota County schools. And, work in, why exactly are you seeking a board, a position on the board, or to be re-elected to your position?
My name is Bridget Ziegler. I am a current school board member. I have been on since 2014. I'm the mother of three young children, three, six, and almost nine. I'm rounding up, I'm getting ready, it's a couple weeks away. And it has been an honor to serve this community. I believe education is the key component that really what drives a community to its progress and moving forward. I think, as was said today, Sarasota County in general is just a remarkable county. I grew up outside of Chicago. The arts were a huge part of my upbringing. I was not the athletic one, but the arts to me were something that kept me to overcome a lot of my fears, to inspire me to keep moving, and I think that helped prepare me for running for office in a lot of ways, and also serving. And to me, when I look at the uniqueness of Sarasota County, especially the collaboration of the arts, Ryan and Angela have done a wonderful job, it is something that makes us unique. And so, in my mind, why I'm running again is ultimately, I believe, we have an incredibly generous community. We have incredibly passionate educators, and there are some areas that I do believe we can improve upon, and I am committed to that. So, because like I said, it's not just about my children, it's about their entire generation and the future of this community.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Danielle Singleton, and I am a native of Sarasota and a proud product of the Sarasota County Public School System. After graduating from Sarasota High School, I attended and received my Bachelor's Degree in Communications, and from there, I attended art school in Atlanta, Georgia. Wonderful school called Portfolio Center for Art and Design, where I majored in graphic design. And I was a graphic designer for a number of years until I got involved in education. And I was an administrator at an all-boys public charter school called Visible Men Academy. And it's nice to see some familiar faces from my time at VMA. We had a great program for the arts, and we had different organizations come in and work with our boys and our parents as well. The arts is something that has just been instilled in me from a very early age. I was always drawing, or painting, or coloring, or rearranging my room, and ripping out advertisements and magazines, because I just thought they were so wonderful. And it really gave me an opportunity to just express myself and to be creative. Growing up here, I went to Girls Inc., where I was introduced to a lot of different art opportunities, working with decoupage, mixed mediums, stained glass, all sorts of opportunities that really fueled my love for the arts. And I'm running for school board because I believe in public school education, and I believe our students and teachers right now are under attack and tremendous pressure, and I don't want to see that anymore. This is my community, and I want to stand up for the teachers, children, and school communities here.
Thank you. Tim, I'm going to repeat the question for you. The question was, "Tell us about yourself, your background, your experience, and your connection or interests in the Sarasota County schools, and exactly why are you running for the school board?"
Well, first of all, I would apologize. Last night I was told it was in Tampa, so... I won't say who...
Brayden, Tampa.
Oh, no, I was told Tampa by some other person.
We were kidding. I thought you.
I did. Full disclosure, I did tell him it was in Brayden.
But, either way, I apologize for not being here on time. I am Tim Enos, 32 years law enforcement here in Sarasota County. 22 of my 32 years was working at the Sarasota County School District, the last three as the Chief of Police. I know this is a thing regarding to the arts. You know, I was involved in the arts as a band member since I was in elementary school. I was in the Kilties, I marched at Macy's Day Parade, as well as in Dallas. All of my children were involved in there, my daughter would dance, so I'm a huge, huge advocate of the arts. I think that that's something that makes people more well-rounded. Music, I know with my children and myself, plays a huge part of our lives. I think that ultimately, when good, bad, or whatever, that music always can get you into a place where you need to be at. You know, I've done a lot of stuff at the schools. You know, one of my things and interest in giving back is, you know, I've been truly a humble public servant for 32 years in this community. And, you know, I've been a coach, I was a high school baseball coach, I've been a Little League coach. I've done tons and tons of stuff, but at the end of the day is, you know, I know that as I was, my career in law enforcement was winding down, that I could still give back to the community as it relates to our children. I ended up becoming interested in the school board in the fall, and ended up announcing my candidacy after I retired on January 10.
Great, thank you.
Oh.
We have two minutes.
Oh, yeah, we have two minutes. Oh, I didn't.
Moving it along.
I thought maybe there would be music or something.
I could sing, and that would clear it up.
I appreciate it. So, anyway, thank you again, I appreciate everybody, thanks.
Lauren?
Sure, okay. So, my name is Lauren Kernov, and I'm running for Sarasota County School Board District Four seat. Like Danielle, I grew up here in Sarasota, and I went through our public school system. And I have two kids, Zach and Reina, who also attend Sarasota County Public Schools. I have a background working in education. I've worked locally at New College of Florida, and actually, my former boss, Bill Woodson, is here, and hopefully he will forgive me for leaving New College to pursue this. When I approached him about it in the fall, he said, "Are you sure you want to do this?" I said, "Yeah, I want to do this." "Are you sure you want to do this?" I said, "Yeah, I want to do this." And so, now I'm doing this. But worked at New College, and I've worked at the University of South Florida. And really, my focus in education, what I've really worked on has been primarily the area of career readiness. So, helping students to sort of think through what are their natural skills and talents and abilities, and what careers do those translate into. So, I'm really eager to bring that focus to our school district. I know there's so much more we can be doing to get our students ready for life after high school, and so many ways to plug mentors into the community. When I think about the arts, though, I also think back to my upbringing and growing up here in Sarasota. I was an active participant every summer in Florida Studio Theater's Summer Acting Program, performed in plays with the Players Theater, with the old Golden Apple Dinner Theater, which is no longer around, but was for many years. And really, for me, I guess, you know, like Bridget said, it really kind of instilled in me a strong sense of confidence, really helped me kind of get out of my shell, be comfortable speaking in public settings. And so, I really have kind of my training in performing arts to thank for many things that I've been able to take on in my career. In terms of why I'm doing this, why I'm running, it really goes back to, I'm deeply invested in this community as a native of Sarasota, a parent of kids in the public school system, and an educator. I'm just deeply concerned with, you know, the lack of civility that we're seeing in our school board, that we're seeing in these meetings, the lack of respect that we're seeing for our educators. And I think it's just terribly important that we bring back a level of civility and respect for each other, for parents, for teachers, for our students. So, that's a huge driver for me. I think it's incredibly important that we remove politics from the school board, from our classrooms, and really bring the focus back to educational outcomes. And so, that's really my motivating force.
Thank you. Robin?
Good evening. I'm Robin Marinelli, and I'm running for District Four also. I have lived in Sarasota for 42 years. 35 of those years, I was a teacher and a school counselor and a district-level administrator for the Sarasota County School District. And so, I bring that perspective of what everybody's been talking about, the changes that have happened in the last few years. And, but basically, the arts. I grew up in a small town in Ohio, and we didn't have the advantages that children have today and that children have in Sarasota County. And I worked here when the arts were cut, and that was devastating. And I can remember at every school board meeting, it was called the Arts Council back then, and every two weeks, they'd come with reams of paper with signatures that they wanted the arts back. So, that was one of the points of the referendum that it passed, was because it was to have the arts, and also school counselors, and to raise teacher pay. But the arts was like number one. So, I saw the devastation when there was not the arts in Sarasota for our kids, and now how it's grown. My family is very artistic. My mother was a concert violinist. My father was a, he played the trumpet for the Cleveland Orchestra when World War II first broke out, and he was so gifted, they had him play. I got none of that. I tried the violin, I tried the flute. My brothers have beautiful voices. I didn't get that. So, I asked my mother, I said, "What happened to me?" And she's like, "Well, I think you came from the pumpkin patch." But anyway, I know I didn't, but the arts is, I love to performance, I love dance. I can't do any of it very well, but I admire, I do it anyway. I sing, and, you know, but I just think it's so important. But from another unique point, how arts is so important to the mental health of kids? Because when Nancy was the president, we worked together, when I was supervisor of Student Services, to bring the arts really to the counselor level. And they offered training for drawing, for kids to express themselves. So, I'd like to see that be enhanced, since mental health is such a critical area for our students. And why I chose to run is because I feel like I have a lot to give back to our community. This has been my passion, education. I have 40 years of experience. I taught special education, five years, high school and junior high in Lexington, Kentucky. So, if you hear that little accent. So, and I want to give back. And like Lauren said, I think we're all agreed, we do not like what we've seen on the board, how people get along, how teachers are being treated. So, we all agree on that, so thank you.
Nora?
I agree with everyone, thank you. I'm Nora Seetek. I am running for District Five. And let's all give Tim a moment, because we both came from a very far land called Venice. So, we, yes, it's far, but I'm a 30-year educator. I came from upstate New York. I am number eight of 10. I'm the first to go to college, and I have an education, a degree in educational psychology. I was a teacher's assistant, and then I put myself through school. And then I was a special education teacher, an assistant principal, a principal, and then the Assistant Director of Special Ed. I came here to relax. I earned it, it's what I wanted to do. And then, I started to watch school board meetings. And that was a part that broke my heart. Because it no longer was about children, and I spent 30 years fighting for kids. I'd love to tell you my fabulous experience with the arts. That would be a big fat lie. So, I will just tell you that my daughters, I have twin daughters, and they took a violin, and it sounded like screeching cats for a very long time. But now they both play beautifully, and they rely on that when they're stressed. But more importantly, when I was a principal, I saw that students came just in time for art classes. And I realized that that was the only way that fed them. So, what I very quickly realized is, I reached out to my art teachers and said, "Hey, can you slip a little English in there? Can you slip a little math?" So, I got to have people work collaboratively together, and I think that's a really important thing. The reason I'm fighting for kids and teachers is because I believe in education. It's my wheelhouse. It's what I've done, it's what I fight for. I'm one and done. I am fighting for this, I'm advocating for this, I are ready and mentoring children. I still mentor two girls from New York. We FaceTime all the time. I get to yell on Facebook, it's not as powerful as in first, you know, front, face-to-face, but I still do it. And then, I'm mentoring a young woman from Vietnam for the last three and a half years. She speaks Vietnamese, I speak English, but now we speak the same language, and that's caring. So, she's doing much better. But we've used music to communicate. And I think the biggest piece that we need to understand is, those of us who sit here and fight for education, we're doing it for the future. And if we're doing it for any other reason, then we should step away.
Thank you. Danielle, what special skill set would you bring to the school board?
So, I bring a lived experience, growing up here in Sarasota and being a product of the Sarasota County School System. I bring calm, I bring decorum, I bring diversity. I will be the first African-American on the Sarasota County School Board. And I think that representation matters, and I think all of the kids in the district need to have someone on the board that looks like them, that will represent them. So, those are some of the skills that I bring. I want to work with and learn from my fellow board members. They have amazing backgrounds, you've heard them all today. And I just, I bring a lot to the board, and I look forward to it.
Thank you. Lauren?
I will bring my perspective, unique perspective as a parent, a parent of kids that are attending our public schools, the only candidate with children that are attending our public schools. So, really bring that deep caring about my kids, what their experience is going to be like, the experience of their peers, and then also really my deep background in education. So, I did, completed a doctorate degree in education, where, you know, really involved rigorous work. When you're doing doctoral study, you need to read every single article that was ever published on your, Uzi knows this, on your topic. Everything that affirms your belief and everything that, you know, goes against what you believe. So, then you have to look at, what was your hypothesis? And then you really have to dwindle it down to, you know, my belief about this specific thing maybe only makes sense in this particular context, and under these particular circumstances. So, I'll sort of bring that real data-driven approach, where I won't be using a broad brush to look at issues, really looking at every single program that the district offers and seeing, how is it serving our students, and are there ways that it could be, you know, working more effectively?
Thanks. Tim?
So, with me, I also, which I didn't say, I've been here for 42 years. I graduated from high school here, I have three students, three kids, all three. My last one just graduated from high school in May, and he's going off to Florida Atlantic University. So, that was part of the reason I was late today. But there's a unique perspective with me, is that, you know, being involved in the district for 22 years, as well as being on the staff there, is I think as a parent, coming from that perspective, there's really two things. One thing we look at is education, and making sure our kids are, get the very best education. The second thing is, is safety. You look at what happened in Uvalde, you look at what happened in Parkland. I testified for best practices. You looked at, we were just number one, we had a very supportive board when it came to the school police department. We just ended up rated one out of 67 counties as the safest district in the state of Florida. All of those things were things that I put in, because we need to always lead and never follow in Sarasota. We've got great supportive parents, teachers, staff, administrators. And when it comes to safety, there should never be any shortcuts. So, one of the things is being a national expert in that. I think that we can't never not have that focus, and I think that a diverse board only makes it that much better, is that we have policy people, we have educators, we have life experience. I'm, again, as a product of Sarasota County Public Schools. I also have a degree in finance from Florida State. So, I also have been preparing budgets of millions of dollars, so I understand what to look for when that, when I was with the sheriff's office, as well as the chief of police within the district.
My background is extensive. I have K-12 experience, I have special education experience, I have budget experience. There's so much that I bring, having a K-12 experience. So, I've hired people, I've written curriculum, I've written behavior plans, I've written IEP plans. I've had to lock down schools when people have been unsafe and have come to threaten the schools. There's so much I've had to do while still being a leader. It hasn't been one lane, I've had to go across six lanes and do it all at the same time. And I think the biggest piece that I have is I respond to things versus reacting. And I think that that's what we need to do, and I bring harmony to our district and to the board, because I don't have any skin in the game. I have a fresh set of eyes, I have three children that are productive, amazing human beings, and I have a great background in education. School board is a natural fit for me.
Bridget?
So, I think that, and I'm glad it was mentioned up here, so when you think about a board, especially Sarasota County, we have over a billion-dollar budget. We have over 5,000 employees, 43,000, 44,000 students. And so, I believe in the governance structure, and it doesn't matter who, whether you align on certain policy issues or not, but I trust voters, and that vote is a board individually to be there and work together. And I think that what's so important about a board and the structure is to lean on each other's various perspectives, as was mentioned here. So, I have worked for 15 years in corporate risk consulting and insurance, fancy way to say insurance, but a lot of it was complex risk. As a board member, you're a fiduciary of taxpayer dollars to make sure those money, that money is being utilized in the most optimal way for high academic success. And, you know, over the time on my, on the board, one of the main things that I've oftentimes focused on is try to mitigate risk so that we don't waste money on unnecessary litigation or unnecessary costs, so that is going to the classroom to support our children. The other part is, I, you know, I was a new, I was a new person at one point, fresh eyes, an eight-month-old, I have three, two are not yet, one, and I think this is an important distinction, I know it's brought up a lot, but two of which are very likely to be attending Sarasota County Public Schools. They are not yet at the age to transfer them in. And so, that in the future is very, I have a three, six, and nine-year-old, I saw the question, so just in case there's any questions there. But I think it's so important to understand and lean in and respect your board members to see what perspectives they can bring, so we can solve problems. I think civil discourse is healthy, because I think that moves, that allows for progress. There's nothing wrong with having a differing opinion. I think it's all the way in which you present it, and how you, and whether you listen, and that, I think, is what has been lacking for a very long time. And I, that is my commitment, and that's something that I've illustrated over my time on the board. When I was chair, I think it was some of the most productive times on the board, because everyone got equal time, the rules applied to everyone, and that was that mutual respect, that the voters elected individuals here, and that is their right to have that role. And we are here to do work, and let's get to, and let's make that, let's get down to business. And so, that's something that I have committed myself to, and moving forward, I think that'll be valuable to move our district forward.
Great. And Robin?
Thank you. I think, I'd like to acknowledge, I think it's very rare that we have five wonderful, talented candidates up here, and we all bring a different perspective. And I, I think that's wonderful. But for me, being 35 years of an educator here in Sarasota County, I have a unique perspective, and working with many people that are in this room, that are community members, I can look at things as, in a different lens also, because of, from a perspective of a school counselor, as a district-level administrator, being placed, I mean, I worked two years at the SEESIS Teen Parent Program and the needs of those students. So, I think I just bring that lens, so when I'm on the board, I'll be able to ask those questions. Is this program aligned to what students need? And we have a variety of students, and we need to look at all of that and make sure the programs, the curriculum is aligned to all of that. I see the importance of what art offers to our students. I see how it enhances the mental health piece. So, that is the uniqueness that I feel like I have, is that I've lived here for 42 years, I worked in this, in the school system, and I have great community relationships, and I look forward to working with that and enhancing the arts in that way.
Well, never anticipated, if there were to be budget cuts, how would you determine which programs, both in the curriculum, such as the arts, and those extracurriculars such as arts, football, and other sports, how would you analyze and determine what should be reduced or cut? And Danielle?
Well, you'd have to look at the whole budget overall. And you can't just, you know, if you lost your job, you wouldn't just eliminate one thing. You would have to make some cuts along the way. I would like to just see people working together, collaboration, maybe instead of, you know, eliminating programs, we could combine them, combine something sports-related and arts. Immediately, I think about ballet. Ballet is very physical, and there's football players that take ballet to strengthen different aspects of their bodies and their minds. So, combining and just finding ways to work together, because I don't, I wouldn't want to see arts programs eliminated. And I think there's way that we could find ways not to cut everything, but combine things better.
Thank you. Tim?
Well, and I 100% agree with that. I think that one of the things that would need to happen is that we'd have to take a look at the overall budget to be able to see exactly what needs to be done. You know, one of the things, as coaching high school sports, is the arts. And if you're in Belleville, whether you're the Sailors, or at Northport, or you're at Venice, in your Indian Band, whatever it is, is all of those programs are, should be equally over across the board, should all be funded at the same level. It shouldn't have anything, because everybody has their own choices. I think when it comes to the budget, and you're looking at a $1.2 billion budget, 71 million referendum, 10 go the church. 71 million referendum, 10 go the charters, yada, yada, yada. I think really you need to go there and you need to look because it needs to be, again, across the board, look at what is going on and then have input of where it is. And because, you know, I know some counties do pay for play on stuff and it, it, what it ends up doing is it affects everybody because you never ever want to stop a kid from being able to play in sports or arts just based on financial need. It should, it should never ever should get to that. That's why it should be looked at across the whole entire budget to make the best decision and not just go ahead and say, oh, well, we're going to get rid of this. Because I think that all of that extracurricular stuff is ultimately what I've seen that have shaped men and women when they get to college or in the trade or their employment. And I would hate to see that we would lose sight of that because education is education, but it's the whole package.
Great. Nora?
First, I want to say I have three children and they were all Division One athletes. So I'm just going to say like, that's my perspective. Having said that, I've spent a lot of money and time with my children. We did not go on vacations. We went to tournaments. So parents who are involved in sports are going to make that happen. I'm going to look at arts, at keeping those for kids because that's not something so readily available. And again, I speak to my students who only came to school. I saw it a lot in my 30 years. Students who I dealt with, behavior students when I was a teacher. And they would all of a sudden snap out of it when it was art class. I'm like, how do you do that? How? And I saw their joy when they were in those classes. So I think in answer to your question, it's the return on investment. We look at, and I've had to do this. I have had the superintendent come to me when I was the assistant super, assistant director of special ed and say, you have to cut. And if I cut teachers or cut social workers, that impedes the other two people. So we need to be cognizant of the fact that we have to look from that 30,000th of view that I have that is going to be able to say, what are we getting our money for? Are there programs that we can cut that really aren't helping children? But let's be really cognizant of all children, not just the ones that we know and we can relate to. Let's make sure that we, when we do cut, and it's horrible to have to do it, we're doing it in a way that's equitable.
Bridgette?
It's an important question. There's a lot of different levers and it's a situation that certainly everyone wants to avoid. But you never know economically what's going to happen. And so there's a couple of different ways I look at it. I think what was said is holistically looking at where you could remove or reduce and pivot. But one thing that I think is really important, one, I think, as was said before, I, I believe our goal is academics and out, you know, successful academic achievement. And in my opinion, and I think everyone said this here as well, is the arts play a pivotal role into that. It taps into many students that maybe traditional academia isn't where they, they flourish, but will actually tap into it. So I think removing any kind of program like that, even with sports, they allow a different point of view to allow that student to flourish. Where I think we're very uniquely poised in Sarasota County is to have a, you know, a, a community like, like is in this room and all of the partnerships. And so while I recognize if there are budget cuts at the district, that it's likely that the economy is not flourishing so much that our nonprofits will also be struggling. But is to, to work together as a community and lean in so that we don't have to knee-jerk reaction and pull anything that will eliminate those experiences for our children. So I think you have to look at it holistically. But I also think leaning in and, and working with our community to try to make sure that we can continue to restore, provide those opportunities for children is what I'd be looking at doing.
Robin?
First, let me make a correction. So thank you for the facial cue. When I said there were five people, there's six up here. I was thinking of five positions. So there are six highly talented. So thank you. But.
I was wondering who the one was.
Well, I, after I looked at the cue and I thought, well, so anyway, I've lived through two major budget cuts in Sarasota County. And I was a product of whose position was cut. So, and when the arts were cut, the devastation of that. And I think before any cut is made in any area, you have to look at the budget. And I, you would also look at what programs really don't have our, our kids not enrolling in as much. You, you look at that whole big picture. But to just, I mean, I, I remember when we had shared decision-making and it was, everybody was, wanted to save their own job. And so it was like, well, we'll cut the media specialists. So I think the, and, and the question to ask is, what are those unintended consequences when any kind of program gets cut? And if it has a direct impact on children and their achievement, then we have to come up with another way and look at other things to make cuts in. And it involves parental input, community input, anything that affects our, our students. We need to get that input as a board member before just blanket decisions are made. And I think I have that unique perspective because I was cut and I've lived through cuts. So, and it's not fun. And it's not fun to have parents come to the board meetings or come to schools and they're upset by programs that have been cut or teachers who have been cut. So you have to look at that really big picture of the budget.
Thank you.
Yes. I think for me, you know, when I think about budget cuts, I would, sort of my guiding principle would be, you know, what I see is sort of the, the big crises, I guess, facing our A-rated, amazing school district. We still have challenges. And I think everyone's aware of the fact that 37% of our third graders are reading below grade level. So really what Robin mentioned about the media specialists, I mean, there are serious unintended consequences. And as a community, I think we are, we need to be really serious about moving the needle on grade level reading. So when I think about budget cuts, that would be something, you know, how would this particular cut or set of cuts affect this goal that we all have of improving grade level reading scores, addressing the teacher shortage, making sure that any cuts we do don't affect what I see as another serious crisis facing our school district with classes, school starting tomorrow. You know, we still have, I don't know what the current number is. A week ago it was 60, 60-something instructional vacancies that our school district was facing. So these are serious issues. And when I would look at budget cuts, I would want to make sure that any cuts that were, were being made would not affect these issues, you know, our instructional issues, and then also this serious grade level reading issue that we're dealing with.
What can a school board do in helping to either recruit and retain teachers? And again, while this, you don't have to solely do this on arts, but if you would also address arts educators?
All teachers need to have the respect shown to them that they deserve. And they need to be paid well. And their benefits package should not be fooled around with. And I've seen all of that happen. Thank goodness we do have the referendum. So we do, teachers are paid more because if you, we, that was the goal to attract the best. What we're facing in Sarasota, state of Florida, nationwide is a teacher shortage, bottom line. Doesn't matter if they're the arts, counselors, classroom teachers. We have a serious problem facing us. And how do we attract when kids aren't even going into those programs and universities are cutting education programs? So I don't have a crystal ball for that. I mean, I can say that we can pay, we can do all that. But if we don't have the people going into education, all that doesn't matter. So that's a, that's a big question that is just not a school board issue. It's a community issue. It's a national issue because if we don't have teachers, what, our schools are going to suffer, children are going to suffer. So I think, how do we make this profession attractive? I think number one, it needs to pay. When you can't even afford to live in the community, you know, there's a big problem. And we have to pay teachers, but we have to make the job attractive. So that is a tough question. And that is a national, national question. And that's a community question of Sarasota County. How many people in this room right now would go into education? Not too many. So I rest my case.
Lauren?
So I agree that, you know, we have to really work on this pipeline issue of making sure that we are building educators and making the profession more attractive. I worked at USF when they were looking at actually closing the School of Education recently. And thankfully that didn't happen. But, but, you know, enrollment numbers in schools of education continue to decline. And so people aren't really interested in going into the profession. I think there are a number of reasons for that. Compensation is of course a huge issue. Here in Sarasota County, the starting teacher salary is higher than the state average. But still, even still, I don't think we're at a moment when we're talking about the instructional vacancies, the teacher shortages that we're dealing with here in our district statewide and nationally, where we need to be thinking about skimping on teacher salaries, especially given the high cost of living here in Sarasota County. So definitely compensation is a, is a major issue. Bringing respect back to the profession, making sure we're teaching, we're treating our educators as the professionals that we know they are. And also really asking our teachers, those teachers that are staying in the profession and those teachers that are leaving the profession, why are they staying and why are they leaving? We were all invited to a meeting, maybe a month or so ago with the school district cabinet leadership. And maybe, maybe this has changed, but when I asked the question of human resources at that meeting, you know, what do we do in terms of an exit interview for our teachers that are leaving? Are we finding out why they're leaving? And then, you know, are we collecting that information and doing anything about it? And it, and what I, what I learned from that meeting is that not, not too much of that data collection and analysis is happening. So I think that that's really important, not just though, I would say, not just for the teachers that are leaving because once they've left, of course, we need to learn, learn from that, learn why they left, but then also be talking more proactively and in an ongoing way with our teachers, new and experienced teachers, why they're staying and what sorts of supports they need to stay invested.
Tim?
Well, I look at it because law enforcement has had the same thing for years and years and years and regarding to the same thing. One of the things that I would look at doing is, you know, all of us moved to Sarasota County. My grandparents moved here in 1968 from New Jersey. I moved here in 1980 from New Jersey. We came here because it's Sarasota. We know we have awesome school district here. It's number one. We still have the maintained as us, and I believe at St. John's, we've always had an A here at Sarasota. I mean, I think that looking at it as perspective of going out and I hate to say poaching or, or stealing teachers from other communities, our, our gain is, is their loss to a certain degree is that what I'm getting at is, you know, we also have a different, if we're going to go to like, my son is 28. What I respond to in regarding to Facebook is not what he responds to in regarding to TikTok. So it's part of what I'm looking at is, is going outside of the box, is recruiting teachers from other parts of the nation to come to Sarasota because we are such a great supportive community that we're using everything to our advantage that they relate to, that they would want to come here because of the amazing districts. And the other thing is, is right now, my son, he's what? $1,900 a month for a one-bedroom, one-bath, 600 square foot. I mean, at 47.9, you, you, you can't, you can't live here. Plus make a car payment, insurance. And, and I think that, you know, I know that the, the board is looking at actively sitting on the, you know, the affordable housing solutions here because I think it's, it goes across everything. And we're only as good as the people that work for us. So I think that that's something as an HR focus, going to where they would be attracted to do, using our community, our arts, our resources, all of that stuff. People want to come here just like we did to use it to our advantage. When I say poaching, I'm like, hey, come here. It's 30, three below zero in Wisconsin. Here it's beautiful at 75. Come on to Florida, we got you. And that's, that's kind of what my approach and my attack would be.
Thank you. Danielle?
I think we need to increase morale. Morale right now with teachers is very, very low. Recently, a survey was done with over 300 teachers here in the county. And I've seen some of the responses. There's a whole website devoted to it. And the responses are just heartbreaking. It's really, really sad. Teachers feel demoralized. They feel like they're the enemy and they are not. And I think we just need to support our teachers wholeheartedly. I know I, on my campaign Facebook page, I've been sharing teacher supply lists because teachers pay a lot of their own money to buy supplies for their classroom and for their students. And new teachers walk into an empty room with maybe a desk and a stapler, if that. So we need to support our teachers. I'd also like to see a pathway for paraprofessionals to advance to be instructional teachers. And maybe instructional teachers have a pathway to the district. This is a serious, serious problem that we have to address. And I really think that increasing morale will be the way.
Great. Bridgette?
So I have been looking at this problem because it's been approaching for some time. And so, and it's not unique to Sarasota. It's not unique to the state of Florida. It's national. And so what I've done, and, and if you do look at studies, if I've had multiple conversations with people that are currently in the district, that have left the district. I agree with the exit interviews, by the way. And I'll tell you, our HR department has come a long way, but we are not where we need to. Because you have to invest in your human capital, especially if you're thinking about the most important component when it caught you, when you talk about the educators. Because second to parents, that edge, that the quality of that teacher and the continuity of that teacher is, is, is single, is the second most important thing to the academic achievement of that, that child. And what, the number one thing, which I think is fascinating, and I think we asked it, this is, it's going to have to take a multi-pronged approach. But we have to get down to the crux of the issue. And yes, compensation is, is, anywhere you go is, is a substantial issue, anywhere you work. But it doesn't matter about how much money you give anyone. At some point, if that working environment is not tenable, if it is, is, you'll get burnt out. If you're not feeling like you are satisfying, and feeling like you're successful at what you are there to do, people will leave. And I believe that overall, you know, we are asking educators to do more and more every single day, almost as if we're, we're, we're asking society, we're asking school districts to solve all of society's problems and putting that on teachers. And I think that's unfair because they are tasked with a very important mission and that's education. But the number one issues that I have heard, second, if you take, if you take compensation out of it, it's behavior. It's behavior issues in the classroom. And it is, it's a distraction constantly. And it's not, and that's not the teacher's fault. It, it, it comes down to, from a societal aspect, I think we need to take a deep look at what's going on. And in order to shift that burden, I think our teachers need to be supported by administration when there are discipline issues. We need to be creative with them because I want to make sure our students are in class. We don't want to do, see a rise in suspensions or expulsions. But the reality is, is their working environment is, is to a point that is so challenging that I think that's largely why you're seeing, and what I'm hearing, and because I think you have to go to the front lines, you have to hear directly from those people who are, who are experiencing it. And across the board, and this is across the country, behavior is the number one issue. So if we don't really start addressing that and changing that culture, and that will change morale, I don't think we'll solve this problem if we don't attack it head-on.
Nora?
Let's talk about the elephant. We're banning books. We're changing curriculum. I'm talking to teachers as we all are, as we're dialing for dollars and calling for votes. And teachers are saying they're exhausted. I am proud to be a teacher. I was asked by my district to leave the classroom to be an administrator. I never wanted to do it, but I did it. I'm a mom. I, I needed to work and, and my district was putting pressure on me to do that. So I will say to you, I'm so proud that I'm a teacher. And as I talk to teachers, it breaks my heart. So I will say to you that we are rich in experience here. So I would like to reach out to people and say, those of you who have been educators, mentor. I would love to do that. Go and talk to new teachers and be there for them. And so I think a mentorship program is really critical. I think professional development is really critical. We need to not put these young people into these difficult positions and say, buena suerte, good luck. And that's what I feel like we're doing. And so these are not widgets. These are children. I keep saying that and I just feel like people are thinking, oh, she's simplistic. No, I have fought for children my whole life. So I'm going to say to you, in every job I've ever had, I've wanted to make sure that teachers had what they needed because they're on the front line. So we need to ensure that we ask teachers, don't tell them what they need, ask them. And I've been asking people and what they say to me is, thank you for asking. And then they say, I don't even know what I need. So let's rip that Band-Aid off and realize as we continue to change their jobs and disrespect them, why would they want to stay? And why would people want to go into it? So as a 30-year educator, I'm so proud of my profession. Let's just start being kind and supporting the people who are instructing our future.
What value do you think in educate, in education in the arts serves and provides to a student of the 21st century? So look, think about students in today, now, the things that they're facing, the types of media, the types, all the different types of input and influences, all of that. What do the arts provide to these students? Lauren?
So I think about my, when you asked that question, the first thing that popped into my mind was my son Zach. And the last couple of days. And the last couple of days, you know, before school starts, I can see he's getting antsy, sort of restless, no, no camp activities, nothing really going on this week. So what's his default? What does he do, gets on the phone? And, you know, you, we monitor it as parents, of course, as much as we can, but for him, when he, he actually did art, he chose art as his elective last year on his own, which I was very happy about unfortunately, not unfortunately, but this year he's chosen to do PE, but he did have that one year where he chose, where he chose art and actually participated in the art center camp this summer for a couple of weeks and loved it. And so I see for him, someone who is, you know, sort of type, I think it's, you know, has benefits for all sorts of kids, but if I look at, you know, at my son in particular, someone who is pretty type A and academically oriented, for him to have an outlet and for every kid to have an outlet that is not so outcome oriented, where you really can just sort of explore and be and there's nothing expected of you. You just can really sort of emote and express yourself and I think it's incredibly healthy, especially now when kids are just inundated with social media and technology to sort of, we need physical outlets, of course, exercise is important, but we also need creative outlets and we need time and space to not be productive and really to just play and explore. And we know obviously that will also lead to stronger academic and educational outcomes. Students will perform better, less behavioral issues for students that are engaged in arts, but really just having that free time and that space in this, you know, high testing environment that we find ourselves in, want to make sure our students are performing, of course, but they need to have that free time and space to explore and just not have to be productive and outcome oriented.
Thank you. Tim?
Well, and I think it all comes down to is, it's really is about, the arts comes down to is an opportunity to express yourself, but it's about your own mental health, but like I said, about music or, you know, my son is an artist. He was a, went to high school, I didn't think he knew how to draw, let alone attend class sometimes, but anyway. But he, he was a baseball player. But anyway, long story short is, is that now his career is, is doing art and he's really successful and I had no idea, but it also involves that his self-confidence is better. He is, his outlook is better, his mental health is better. He listens to the music while he does his artwork. He's, it, it, it just, and it permeates all the way around because then they're happier as their dad, I'm happier. I mean, it's just something that, you know, that's why, you know, we can't lose sight of that ever is because it's something and it has to do with mental health. If you look at the mental health crisis our kids are under, I mean, look at social media. You can look at girls or, who are on social media, I forget what the average is, but their suicide rate's up 151%. And it's a direct correlation with the, with, with the data that it goes back to prolonged social media contact, just because it is what it is and what they're able to see at any time of any day. So that arts piece and I know with mine, my family and people that I know, you know, it's a really is about mental health. It just allows you to be what you be and it calms you, it's just like I, I played the trumpet and like when you're in the band, it's just being you. It's just being you and doing you. And that's, that's, I think, what really what it comes down to being in the arts is really about.
Nora?
When I was a principal and the assistant director of special ed, my office was in the high school. So when I was a principal, I was a middle school principal, but when I was the assistant director, I had it in the high school. And whenever I felt really stressed, I would go to the arts department. We had a fine arts wing. As soon as you walked in the doors, there's people dancing, there's people singing, there's people expressing themselves and there was a feeling of acceptance. And that's what the arts always meant to me. It didn't matter your cognitive level, my experience is heavily in special ed, you could express yourself through music and to me it was powerful, but kids accepted regardless of what class you were in, how high functioning you were working. The arts allowed a child to be accepted and to be. And so I think the critical part of all of this is that we need to realize that we don't just talk about academics. Obviously that's important. We want people to excel and to soar, but we also want them to find their lane. We want them to find where they feel comfortable and the arts does that. And what I found is more than anything else in my 30 years, that milieu allowed children to simply be safe. And so I am a huge proponent of the arts. I can sing and I won't do it to you today, but I can sing, but I will tell you that I rely on music a lot, especially this past year, man. It's been hard. In case any of you are thinking about campaigning, don't do it. It's hard. So I put on the Mills Brothers because my dad, who's gone, he used to sing it and as soon as I put it on, I think of him and dancing with him. And so the arts takes us to a different place and I think it's, we can't put a price tag on it. It's valuable.
Bridgette?
Yeah, there's so many things, yes, two minutes is going to be tough, but I think as was said, you know, there are so many elements that it allows, arts allow you to, well, one, there's a myriad of different arts, right? So for me, it's piano and music and, and it's wonderful when I turn off the news and turn on music in the car and I'm in such a better mood. But I also think what we were talking about, our students and the world they're growing up in with social media, which I think is the bane of our existence and I would love to see it go away. But that's not the reality, but I think to try to shelter them, our children and the developing minds so that they can be free from that. And I think what's wonderful about the arts, there's a couple of different things is it allows you that ability to release and express yourself. And what I think is so unique, particular about Sarasota County and, and the way we integrate it into our programs is, you know, you think of the arts and you think of that oftentimes as only accessible to people with means. And so, and so, so students that are from families that don't have financial ability to, you know, be involved in, you know, whatever, whether it be piano lessons, violin or what have you, they may not never know or be able to tap into that gift that they have. And so what I think is remarkable that we've been able to do that in Sarasota County so that, that children, again, because I think children learn in a variety of different ways and sometimes traditional academia really doesn't show on the grading scale that they're, that they're thriving, but if you're able to tap into them in a different way, and I think the arts do that, I think sports also do that. But to me, I think the more we can expose our children to the different opportunities and I think the arts is right there in it and try to allow them to be children and express themselves in a myriad of different formats. I think we, I know there's enough studies out there that indicate that that will allow their academic achievement and skills to thrive, which is our goal, so.
Danielle?
What I love about the arts is that it's subjective. There's no right or wrong answer, how a painting might make me feel, make you, might make you feel differently. And when I think about the 21st century student, I have to draw on my time at Visible Men Academy, which was an all-boys K through five public charter school, Title I, very high poverty. A lot of the boys there had home lives that were less than ideal and I saw how art affected them each and every day. We had art class every day, not just a couple of times a week. And I saw boys that were quiet and shy have amazing artwork, but the one area where they really shined was with spoken word. We had a teacher there who taught spoken word and, you know, now it's called spoken word, then it was called poetry. And if you want boys to get into poetry, you call it spoken word. But it gave them an outlet and they could, they learned about writing and they learned that you can put something together, it doesn't have to rhyme, but it can make you feel a certain way and make others understand your background, your culture, where you're coming from. So I really saw firsthand art affecting the boys in a very positive way and their parents as well. With our parenting program, we had parents doing spoken word and, and putting on performances as well. And that's a wonderful example for children to see their parents or caregivers experimenting with the arts in that way. And, you know, say what we will about social media, but that's content creation. You talked about TikTok, that's editing, that's lighting, that's music. It's incorporating all of those things, as long as it's used safely and you're not spending hours and hours and hours on it, it can be a productive tool and outlet as well.
Perfect. Robin?
When I think of the arts, I, I look, I look at these two performers here and I'm, I'm visualizing them as young students in school and, and the joy that they have on their faces and how they are in tune, but if you really look, they have different, they're not all, they're, both their positions are not exactly the same. So what I'm getting at, it, it is a, the arts gives students a chance to be in a, in a very safe environment, in a, in an environment where their talents can come out. And if they're lucky enough to be like these two, that I think they, they have the best of the real, well-rounded life because they have an outlet, because we all know our jobs can be very, very stressful. So I think the arts is a wonderful opportunity for kids to feel belonging, to have a purpose, to have a group that they feel comfortable with and it can set a wonderful path, their career path. So I, I think the arts, it's, it's, I agree with what everybody else has said up here. I wish I was as talented to be out there because I can see what a great outlet it would be, especially this year, but I just, I can't say enough of what, whether it's music, design, fashion, film, there's a collective group that, that these, that students belong to. And when you feel like you belong to something in school, you come to school and the achievement rates go up. So that's why I will always be a supporter of the arts.
Because the Arts and Cultural Alliance, we're the only group that puts together educators, organizations, people like you that love art, artists and art professionals, all into one to support culture in our community. There are so many voices out there and advocacy, community outreach and education can really only be, only be done by people who care and come together. So I encourage you to please join the Arts Alliance. I know, I'm like. Okay. Great. The wonderful Samantha Werfel who put all of this together. We, we had a lot of questions, so this one is, you think one of the, okay. Do you have ideas how parents can be educated about some of their, their concern areas in order to address their fears about woke CRT as a way to bring down the temperature of the discourse and bring data into the conversation? So would you like me to repeat that? Okay. Do you have ideas about how parents can be educated about some of their concern areas in order to address their fears about woke, about CRT as, as a way to bring down the temperature of the discourse and bring data into the conversation? Laura?
One-on-one or in a small group? We don't do it in public. I think it's really important to talk about factual information when it really happens. I think oftentimes what I'm hearing are things that are happening and when I was a leader, I would always say, when did that happen exactly? Because I want to address things. It's very important that we address and educate because that's our job, but let's make sure that we're dealing with factual things and talk to people on a one-to-one basis or a small group so that we could really touch in and get people to understand what their issues are and have people be heard.
I think, sorry, I'll just jump in. I, I agree. I think that we need to also find more ways for parents to get involved in the school, you know, at the school level, increase communication between teachers and parents so parents feel really informed about what's going on in the classroom, engaged as partners in the educational process. But yes, making sure that we're asking questions that really get it, you know, what is your specific concern? How can we make sure it's addressed in the classroom and at the school? You know, I think about, I always go back to this, but I think about PTO meetings and how they're not really accessible to all working parents. So there are some barriers out there that don't really allow parents to get as involved as they could be in really being as informed as, as they really could be about what's going on in their, in their children's schools. PTO meetings are typically at 9:00 AM, right after you drop your child off to, to go to class and that's not accessible to working parents. So I think there are other kind of creative things that we could do at the school level to bring more parents into the conversation so they really feel engaged and involved and understand what's going on in their children's schools.
Robin?
Well, I, I think parents need to feel welcome, number one, when they go to school and then to be able to go in the classrooms and to see what exactly is being taught. Because when you can see it and you have access to the books or whatever, then that can alleviate and stop some of the, for lack of a better word, the rumors that are all going around and, and they can see for themselves what's actually happening in the classroom. So I think accessibility and also like Lauren, have meetings where parents can attend. I mean, some can attend during the day. When I worked at Southside, I don't know how many people in this room were, when I went to Southside in 1981, so I'm aging myself, Southside had the lowest test scores right next to the old Booker Bay Haven School and they were, they were going to close Southside. And it took a lot of work. So I was sent there first and then the, the principal, John Spillman, who just recently passed away, transformed that school into the school that it is today, one of the most desired school. But that took a lot of work with the parents and at that time, we used to work with, with the busing to try, because we had, we had Cohen Way, we had all the way up to Manatee County. South, Southside was very, very diverse and the old Booker Bay Haven, they, they closed that school, they put, made Bay Haven into a magnet school and then they built ME Booker. So it's really getting that community and parental involvement and getting them to come to the schools and to be able to look at things.
Bridgette?
Yeah, I think communication for any issue is going to be the best way to resolve it or get, get ahead of it. You know, something was said about partnerships and, and working with parents, I, I agree with that all day long and I think, but at the same time, you have to establish boundaries. And so if you're transparent and communicating the right way, I think you start to establish that trust and you create the environment where it's, no one's trying to keep things out, but you also, we can't, they have people, you can't have, I can't imagine parents storming in all the time and that may be an impediment to, to the classroom. So establishing those boundaries, but knowing and being proactive with that communication. You know, in my experience on the board, I think that almost every single situation that has been exacerbated or, or, or didn't go the best way, could have been averted with better communication and more proactive communication. And I think that when you do that and you build that trust, when issues come up, when incidents, when there's misunderstandings about things, whether it be on the district side or the staff side or the parent's side, you've already established an element of trust so you can overcome that issue.
Great. Danielle?
So I think that the majority of parents overall are happy with their child's education, with their school and their teachers. I think that each school should have in place a communication guideline. So parents have someone at the school level in which they can talk to about successes and challenges as well before they go to a very public school board meeting and airing their grievances for the first time. I think that, I agree with Lauren, that having other opportunities for parents to get involved, be it PTO, PTA meetings, varying the times of those meetings as well for working parents. But I just think that, you know, things have been transparent. No one's hiding anything from parents. I think that parents are the expertise in their child's lives and education and that it's a very vocal minority that is saying that they don't have rights or that things aren't transparent. No one's hiding anything from any parents, especially at the district level.
Tim?
Well, what I would do, what I would look at it is that I think is it's 100% it's regarding is to barriers to communication. I think that, you know, one of the things that were very effective is when the superintendent did the town hall meetings last fall. I think that that's something again about being able to express opinions, being able to go there, be able to talk as well as being have more and I, you know, and talking with other parents about accessibility to be able to go to their schools. I know that, you know, there's things that stop that parents aren't able to go in and, and do things. And obviously I'd like to go back to on the first day of school when your, your mom or dad, you can walk your kid to your kindergarten classroom. And I think a lot of that has to do with trust. and then it gains all of its strength, which comes back to the communication issue, which comes back to more accessibility to the administrators, more communication, more parental involvement. Because we know that the more parents are involved in their child's education, the better the child is going to be in education. So I think that that's another thing. And when you have all of that, I think then that opens up that door of trust, and then they can say that the, you know, the rumors will stop, that, that, that is not the case, and that it's, it's, it ultimately could be 180 degrees. But I think the communication is ultimately is always going to be the biggest piece.
Bridgette, we'll have you start, but how can people communicate with you to get their questions answered?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you again. This is an honor. And I think, again, when you think about Sarasota County, this is a point of pride, what we have in here as far as the Cultural Alliance and the partnerships and being able to allow all of our children, all of our children, I think that's so unique, access to the opportunities within this community and as it pertains to arts. You can reach me at, I think, Bridgette, you can go to my website at bridgetziggler.com. You can reach me on my cell phone if you want to take it down. It's 941-404-1600. And you can email me at Bridgette, I'm sorry, bridget@bridgetziggler.com. Sometimes the phone number is a little bit quicker and easier these days, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Nothing is off the table, even if it's something that you think I, I won't answer. I'm happy, happy to do so, and I think that's the responsibility of a public servant. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Danielle?
I want to thank you all too for the opportunity and thank you all for being here. I am happy to answer any questions that anyone may have about my experience in the arts, growing up here in Sarasota. It's just such an art-rich community, so encouraging. I have to invite you, Robin, to Cohen Way, which is in the Rosemary District, which is full of wonderful murals and art. And I was very happy to see the latest mural of Buck O'Neil in right behind where I live. And I see it every day, and it's so wonderful to see art by African-Americans about African-Americans and other cultures in the Rosemary District each and every day. My website is singletonforschoolboard.com. All my information is there, phone number, email, please reach out. I am happy to speak with any of you. If you see me at events or out in public or watching the several dogs I dog sit, stop me, ask me, whatever, I am happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great. Tim?
So you can go to timunis.com. I think we're all the same, tim@timunis.com for emails. You can also call me. Anything that you want to ask, obviously, is that, you know, I'm, I'm very passionate. Again, I've lived here for a long time, graduated, my kids have graduated. I attended the Harvard of the South Florida State University. Thank you.
That's right.
Thank you. I see all your gators out there. Thank you, thank you. Any gators, please do not send me your questions. But at the end of the day, truly is, you know, I, I am 100% about constitutional rights. I think that your public officials, you know, if you have any questions, you know, the one thing that I know how things happen is that people don't come forward when they have questions, and it turns into things that may or may not be appropriate, or, or that's the truth. So if you have a question or you want to know, well, what's my background or why am I doing this for, what's my art stuff? Just, please just reach out. I'll, I'll answer it for you at, at any time that I can. Thank you. And thanks, everybody, for letting me come in. And I apologize for being late, and I won't listen to Nora's directions again. Thanks.
And I want to make sure you know, it is not the Tampa Alliance. It is Sarasota County.
Whoops.
Well, thank you all so much for putting this forum together and having me here. You can reach me also on my website, laurenkernov.com. Email me at lauren@laurenkernov.com. And, you know, I'll be out too over these next couple of weeks leading up to the election. So I'm sure I'll see many of you out and about, if not at a official school board event. I'll be at the bus stop. Now I'll also be at gymnastics practice, soccer field. So this is all ramping up for me with school starting tomorrow. So look forward to talking more with all of you.
Great. Robin?
Right. robinmarinelli.com. And to clarify, if you listen to what data I said, 1981. So not current, back in 1981. So, but you can reach me, robinmarinelli.com.
Get it? electnora.com. That's mine, so thank you.
Again, thank you WBTT. Thank you all candidates. You really gave very thoughtful and insightful answers to the questions. I know that you will be receiving some other interesting questions, so if your questions were not asked, please make sure you get in contact. Remember, early voting begins August 13th through August 21st. Voting is actually August 23rd. And many of us have already voted. We've already done, you know, we voted by mail. But what was so important about tonight was to show the support that our arts have and what they mean to us in this community. So thank you, all of you, for coming. Thank you.
[applause]